And then we are going to go into executive session. So first, we're going to do the citizens to be heard. We will do in person first. So we have first, we have Scott Heim. You want to, question to speak?
Scott Heim, 1981, 1986. Congressman A. Grayson Allen, our pal Grayson, who was best known as demonizing political opponents. Claimed that Republicans would have scandalously created and dumped. Navigation District claimed that the city wants to pollute our harbors and beaches. Want every person in the audience to look around, pick out the people you think actively worked and polluted our waters. If you're going to demonize, you should at least be able to identify the demons. Back when this started, it was AC and D being demonized. So I gave them an opportunity to tell their side. When some people started claiming that they were operating illegally, I recommended that the district close to Rockport each for the Fourth of July veto, or at least threaten to. I believed that the threat would force the city to negotiate, that it would demonize them. What I found was that the commissioners, AC and D, were only interested in flexing their own political muscles. I pleaded for our local officials to slow down the random development, not to give tax abatements zoning areas that's impervious to everyone's ask. AC and D chairman told me explicitly, and I quote, "He was going to use Little Bay to stop upwind development." I questioned the legality of that, but I confess that I thought slowing things down might be cool. Sometimes it takes a little leverage to agree with the rules of negotiation. Now the shoe's on the other foot, it's the city that has leverage. There's a quote from the Bible that says, "Reconcile quickly with your adversary while you're still in the way of court. Otherwise, he may hand you over to the judge." If you don't care for Bible quotes, there's a modern day saying, "When you play stupid games, you win stupid prizes." There was an engineering study out at Code Harbor, and it said that AC and D needed to install several best management practices similar to those they claim were required for the drains project. But they opted not to spend their own funds on that. In the meantime, they approved a marina on the north end of Little Bay that will be fueling boats right on the water. I suggested the marina was inconsistent with the messaging and got shouted down. This is not a, this is a turf war and not a principled stand. The AC and D is sitting on a massive war chest of taxpayer funds, just like the school district. They could have paid for a lot of the things they're demanding rather than paying for a lot just in attorneys. Maybe we should just be thankful that they didn't decide to ask for the turf for fairgrounds. This council and its predecessors have contributed to our problems. You plow ahead with a downtown development program, know that she didn't have the required range in place. But we can't change the past. If the AC and D won't negotiate in good faith, do what you have to do. But don't allow them to use an 11-hour negotiation to stall you while they get their taxpayer funding a lot more to call in some paid-for boat.
Our church and all the residences and businesses impacted at that time are at risk of this happening again if we don't get beyond this impasse by moving forward with a mutually agreeable compromise. And hopefully, I think that there should also be due consideration for preventing or mitigating the possibility, if any, of unwanted sediment or more pollution of the harbor, whether it is the result of runoff from discharges from boats or when the harbor. If those reasonable assurances can be made, I see no reason why we can't move forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Jack Wright.
May you force me to add, I came to say, Mr. Mayor, so I have to say, Mrs. Mayor Protem, Madam City Secretary, council people, staff. My name is Jack Wright. I live at 418 Cherry Hills. I've been a resident for 28 years. I didn't come this evening to complain, quite the contrary. The news that the city is considering eminent domain to complete the Concho Street Drainage Project is the best news I've heard in recent memory, and frankly, long-term memory. This rogue government entity has proven that it plays by its own set of rules known only to them. They change the rules in meetings without a meeting to say they changed the rules. They refuse to honor the already negotiated and signed agreement with the city. These actions are akin to the rancher who dams up the stream on the property above those below to rob them of water rights. Basically what it is. It's kind of a modern-day version of it, but that's what it is. Eminent domain's probably not only the best course of action, it's probably the quickest. I applaud you. I hope you are able to get it through. It's time that the city is recognized for its efforts, and the Navigation District is recognized for an elected body that sees fit to put its foot on the throats of the citizens of Rockport and of Fulton and of the county over what, as Mr. Jackson correctly pointed out, is nothing more than a turf war, or maybe it was Mr. Heim. That's all it is. It's a turf war. And it's got to stop. So I ask you to please do it and applaud you when you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Brundrett.
Lady didn't start the clock while we walk up here. We walk slow. We're old guys. I appreciate the council having this time tonight. And I want to speak as a private citizen, not as a Ranges County surveyor, not as consulting expert for the city, and not as an engineer. I want to speak as a citizen. I live at 409 South Pearl here in Rockport. The property has been in our family continually for 146 years. And 76 of those years, I've seen flooding on our property. When we get a heavy rain event of 10, 15 inches over a three-day period, I have a foot of water in my street. I've learned to mitigate that. I've got over a foot of water in the back property in my lot, and it's all due to the drainage. It's not all the city's drainage. Some of it is textot drainage going down Market Street, but we have a drainage problem. I've also witnessed firsthand with my own eyes downtown Rockport, all of the old businesses downtown have water anywhere from a foot to 18 inches, probably five times in my life. And it's usually after not just a hurricane, but sometimes just a good tropical storm over a multi-day period of time. There are solutions to this, and I can tell you that. And I applaud the city and the county for the work that they've been doing lately with the help of the grant money. And we're finally see the light at the end of the tunnel to help this out. But we need to get the water to the bay. And I'm not here to point fingers, but I will tell you that when the property adjacent to the harbor is seven foot and the downtown area is five foot, there's the two-foot bowl that's going to hold water and the community is going to flood. I've committed my life for the rest of however long I have to make sure that we get proper drainage in this community. I have fought it literally for 46 years. I could write a book about drainage, and I'm not going to give up until we have adequate drainage. There's one more thing I want to say just to clarify. There's been some attacks on me on public media about the city's paying me a potful of money to be the consulting expert. I want to make it very clear tonight in the record that, and Vanessa can vouch for this and any other person on the council, that everything I've done, I've done pro bono to help the city because I believe in drainage that much. And I will do that until we solve this problem. So thank you all for listening.
Thank you. Scott Heim, I have a written card. Did you have more to say, or did you have two? Billy McCray.
Good evening, City Council. Good evening, everybody. I'm here just as a victim of flooding. Myself and my wife Jackie own a business on 209 South Austin Street called Attitudes and Latitudes. I'm here to talk about the flooding, of course, how it impacts our business. We have to shut down for over a week every time it floods. We lose revenue, we have additional costs, and it's a disaster when it's happened. We've been there 12 years, and the first four, five years, no flooding. Then suddenly, there was flooding three times in a year. And we've been lucky, there hasn't been any flooding for the past three years, I think. What helps? Drainage. That's what I've seen over the time. One time, cleaning out the drains helped. Early warning helps. I go down when it's going to flood, or there's any signs of flooding, and I prepare our store for flooding. I stay in the store during the whole flood, so that when it recedes, I open up and start working on it. Another thing that annoys me a lot, and I've seen improvements on that. The cars drive up and down Austin Street, cause a wake, and cause additional flooding, which we have, you have in the past stopped that. What's changed since the last flooding? The art center wasn't there the last time Austin Street flooded. I'm worried about how this will impact future flooding in Austin Street. So any drainage projects that are there to help, it's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Nancy Bolting.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Bolting. I live at 201 Spanish Woods Drive in Rockport, Texas. I'm coming before you tonight as a concerned citizen and a fellow small business owner that has great respect for our downtown merchants who have been negatively affected by floodwaters. Since Harvey in 2017, there have been several weather events that have occurred. In a four-year span after Harvey, we experienced several natural disasters that affected many residents, workers, employers, and small business owners. Weather can be predicted, but even those predictions can change unexpectedly. In 2021, this is a great example of unexpected changes. February 2021, we had a freeze. Spring, summer of 2021, we had major rain events that brought flooding to some in the city. Rainfall of 10 inches in one day, seven inches in another, and then in July of 2021, it brought a sum of 25 inches in three days. I sat with my husband in this room and listened to numerous citizens affected by floodwaters, either pleading or demanding that our city government find a solution to the drainage issues, fix the problem, mitigate, come up with a plan, just do something. After doing some research, I was surprised to learn that in 2007, this very issue was discussed. In March of 2008, a plan was approved by all parties involved. This plan has now been named the Concho Street Drainage Project, 2008 to 2024. How many floods in dollars have we had lost in money and in mitigation to try for these business owners and homeowners? How many have done the mitigation? How many of you have fixed the mitigation or fixed the problem? And to know nothing significant has been done. This is no longer a project, but a necessity and should be a priority to be completed. Brett and I both support the city of Rockport in their effort to mitigate further flooding and the damage it brings to those affected. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have some written forms, and I'm going to have the council help me. I'm going to have you start tonight.
Warren Haffinger, 2517 Turkey Neck Circle, Rockport, Texas, regarding business item 11. Thank you for the opportunity to address the Rockport mayor and council. I 100% support and encourage your affirmative votes to authorize Rockport City legal to use eminent domain proceedings to condemn the necessary AC and D properties to facilitate the completion of waterfront drainage projects. Teresa Lynch, 1101 East Linden Street, Rockport, Texas, regarding 11A, approval of drainage easement. I support the city of Rockport to complete the Concho Drainage Project to help minimize future flooding in the area of Rockport.
Councilman Hale.
Patrick Rios, 2510 Turkey Neck Circle, regarding item 11A. I support the completion of the Concho Street Drainage Project. This needs to be completed for the health, safety, and welfare of our community. Jesus Dominguez, 708 North Magnolia Street, item 11A. Based on the materials provided with the amended packet, I'm in favor of the condemnation of a portion of Aransas County Navigation District property, Veterans Memorial Park, in order to complete the Concho Street Drainage Project.
Mark Wagnon, 1036 North Austin Street. I am Mark Wagnon, and my spouse Barbara and I reside around 1036 North Austin Street. As residents of Old Rockport, we believe the Concho Street Drainage Project needs to be completed as quickly as possible. It appears that ongoing negotiations with AC and D are at a standstill or taking way too long, resulting in unreasonable delays to the completion of the drainage project. Therefore, I fully support moving forward with the condemnation. I also understand that this will likely end up in court to resolve the matter and the price the city must pay for the land, but at least an end will be in sight, and the completion of the project will occur. The current situation is untenable trying to work with AC and D to resolve this matter. Move forward with haste before those of us in Old Rockport are flooded out with a storm or 20-inch rain. Greg Stevens. Although I do not live full-time in Rockport any longer, I own the property in Old Rockport at 1105 North Allen, and I visit Rockport often. I support the use of eminent domain to finally complete the Concho Street Drainage Project. This project is clearly beneficial for the Rockport community, including residents, property owners, and visitors. The project must be finished for the greater public good and for the public safety and welfare.
We have Courtney Sanchez, 1032 North Austin Street, Rockport, Texas. And this is in favor of 11A. I would like to state that I'm in favor of condemnation of portion of the Navigation District property in order to finish the project. We have Lynn Powers on 66 Blue Hair and Drive, Rockport, Texas. It is my understanding that business item 11 is crucial to the drainage issues that Rockport has experienced. I find it a real shame that the two entities involved have not found a peaceful solution to the issue. The Presbyterian Church and other properties were severely damaged in storms due to poor drainage. The city has found a way to complete a drainage project without harming Memorial Park except to put pipe underground. Why would that be an issue if they are repairing the area afterwards? Please pass this business item and help protect all the businesses and homes in the areas from future storm drainage. Thank you, Lynn Powers. We have John Heffron, 208 Champions Drive, Rockport, Texas. This is in favor of 11A. I write in favor of the city council adopting a resolution including as part of agenda item 11A. Some history and background is important. For years, the city has planned to construct the Concho Street Drainage Project. The project always contemplated that there would be an underground drainage outfall leading from Concho Street under a very small portion of the NAST, Nap District managed land near Veterans Memorial Park and emptying into Rockport Harbor. Drainage outflow from Concho Street into Rockport Harbor was approved by the district on September 17, 2007, and March 3, 2008. Underground construction was done on district land and at the Rockport Harbor. It was understood by the district and the city that when funds became available to construct what is now known as the Concho Street Drainage Project, the outfall pipe would already be in place, and the city would lay underground pipe from Concho Street and connect to it. However, in late 2021, and ever since then, the district has started to claim that it has the authority to control all storm water runoff from the community into Little Bay, Rockport Harbor, and all navigable waters within its jurisdiction. It was made unworkable and unreasonable demands on the city as a condition to completing the project as contemplated. Nowwithstanding the fact that the district does not have the legal authority to control storm water runoff, the city has made repeated attempts to reach a reasonable agreement, but to no avail. As a direct result of the district actions, the compilation of the Concho Street Drainage Project has been delayed. The cost of the project has increased, and the lives and property of affected citizens in downtown Rockport have been endangered in the event of a significant rain event. The district has left the city with no other choice but to exercise its right of eminent domain in order to complete its extremely important drainage project. I urge the council to adopt the resolution. And then we have Katie Jackson, 2205 Monkey Road. And this is going to be in favor. After a complete reading of the city council package on the agenda item and asking questions, there's no issue I see with respect to Veterans Memorial Park. This 20-foot wide easement does not come near the statues and monuments on the south end of the Veterans Memorial Park. The completion of Concho Street Drainage Project will provide greater water flow at the lower speed. It will Jurassic bleed, reduce the threat of flooding for the First Presbyterian Church and other buildings in this basin, including the businesses along Austin Street. Please approve this agenda to support all drainage efforts in this 185-acre drainage basin.
And that will be the end of the citizens to be heard. I believe I have to go into the executive session because that's how it's read on the agenda first. Yeah, because it says we convene for 11A.
Chair, if you can, if you're drafting, if you can move an item, just announce that you're moving the item and identify the item number, and you're taking an item out of order, and that's perfectly acceptable.
So we can do 11 twice?
Yep.
Okay. I'm going to move Agenda Item 11A now before 10A. So our city manager can do a presentation for you before we go into the executive session.
Mayor Protem, council. Thank you for letting me be here tonight. I have a presentation for you. You've seen part of it. I've added quite a bit of information as the status has been changing. This is regarding the Concho Street Drainage Improvements. We've been working on those ever since I've been here, which is about 18 months, and obviously significantly before. We're talking about Rockport Harbor, which you can see, I think I have a pointer, in the picture there, right here. And then if we go in a little further, currently, the city has a discharge point right here where the blue arrow is. So all of the water for the harbor basin currently drains out of a 42-inch pipe right there at the blue arrow. What we are looking to accomplish here is to move our discharge point to where the yellow arrow is, which is ironically right beside the blue one, into three-by-six culvert boxes that have already been installed. We're seeking a 20-foot by about 160-foot wide easement through Memorial Park. That's approximate. Don't judge my scale here. I know there's one engineer out there. So what we're seeking is just this, just this portion right here. This area that you see here is what we're calling the harbor basin. It currently drains into the harbor. This is what drains there now and what we propose to drain there in the future. We will not be adding any more drainage area with the installation of our new culvert. So I think that's key. We'll talk about the timeline here. A couple of people mentioned some things here. In 917 of 2007, the Navigation District voted unanimously to allow our stormwater drainage into the bays and the harbor and to install the three-foot-by-six-foot outfall boxes into the bulkhead that is existing today. Again, 332008, the Navigation District unanimously voted to install the east drainage boxes with the construction of the bulkhead to vote very similar items, drainage and install the boxes. So half of the project, if I go back, a portion of the project is already installed via that vote. Let me see the best. A portion of the boxes right here on the road, it's very small there, I'm sorry, are already installed, and they have been since 2008. I think it took them about a year or so to get them in, so maybe 2009. When we started to continue this project, 1112 2001, we were, I guess, showed up on a tractor and were given a no trespass letter. Negotiations continued for a while. We eventually offered $25,000 for the easement. That has been appraised now at zero value, but that was our offering there. And then on 3/2 2022, version nine of a license agreement was offered, and I believe that that's where everybody threw their hands up and stopped. Interim city manager Morton, I know he made an effort to negotiate an agreement with the Navigation District. I've had informal conversations with some of the parties, but nothing has really materialized out of it. So about a little over a month ago, we sent an easement document with the appraisal and the survey to the Navigation District, and we asked them to respond within 30 days, and we did not receive a response. That is what prompted us to put the condemnation on the agenda. That is what prompted us to put the condemnation on the agenda. So that's where we are timeline-wise. I'll talk about some of the facts here. The city is divided into basins based on water flow. It's pertinent that we flow our water, our stormwater into the appropriate spot based on the basin. So we're not having other areas take stormwater that they are not intended to. The harbor basin will flow into Rockport Harbor with or without intervention. The intervention will capture and direct the flows as to a pointed area instead of mass sheet flow. Captured stormwater from the harbor basin currently goes into the harbor via a forty-two-inch pipe. So all of that area that we just showed is all going to the harbor right now. It's just going through a forty-two-inch pipe. This project does not increase the water discharge into the harbor, and completion will actually slow the water down. Where it's coming through the forty-two-inch pipe very rapidly, when we put it through the three-by-six boxes, it'll slow it down and reduce the velocity. But at the same time, it will allow the water upstream to get into the closed system quicker and reduce the surface flooding. We've completed projects or are completing projects to the north and south of this that are designed to reduce overflow to the harbor basin. Thirty-five is a breakpoint. Typically, in the past, water has overflowed thirty-five and gone into the harbor whereby that's not the basin it's designed to go in. So the other projects will actually take that overflow volume off of this project. So theoretically, in a big rain, we would be reducing the amount of water that goes into the harbor. Catch basins are not a viable option for this project. They typically are for areas of under five acres. That's how they work best. This is over a hundred. I think it's about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty-two. There we go. Rerouting is not an option. We're going with the natural topography of the peninsula. And based on the basin, the area of the basin, the cost would be exorbitant to reroute it. There's approximately two hundred and eighty structures at direct risk of flooding with a substantial rain in the area that we showed on the previous slide, two hundred and eighty structures. They're currently unprotected while this drainage project is remaining incomplete. The Concho Street Drainage Project is functioning at about twenty percent efficiency right now. This is in the basin that we are talking about, and this was not Hurricane Harvey. This was twenty twenty-one rain. I have a few pictures there. That's what we want to avoid. So moving forward, we are, we're partnering with the county, the Navigation District, Bolton, and the portion of Aransas Pass that is in Aransas County to work up a stormwater master plan for the entire peninsula. The city has conceded that it will include environmental considerations in our stormwater drainage practices. Once the master plan is adopted, we'll put those in there. We have adopted best management practices for all of our current and future projects. We also are following our drainage master plan to make sure that each basin drains to its intended point. So we don't tax undersized basins with water that they don't need. Again, here's the area we're talking about. Next step, we have put on our agenda to vote for condemnation. The next step would be to mail an initial bona fide offer. That takes about thirty-five days. Typically, you could continue discussions and negotiations during that thirty-five days. Mail a final offer is the next thing that would happen. That takes about twenty-one days. There's still room for negotiation and discussion, and then you would go to a condemnation hearing. However, today, we had a meeting with a committee of the Navigation District, and we came up with a solution that we think is viable. I would like for you guys to seek legal advice on the property, on the real property, in executive session. And then we'll have some options for voting, depending on what you hear from our legal advice, our legal team. Then we'll have a recommendation for a vote. Does that make sense vaguely? Is there any questions on what was presented slowly or anything outside of that that I can answer for you?
I want to thank you. We've talked a lot about this kind of over and over and over again. To be able to kind of get it into one package, I think you did a good job telling the story. I mean, this is years of history. You baked into a pretty short PowerPoint. So I thank you for that. I have no questions on the presentation.
Do you have any questions?
There's no other questions. I would like to now move ten A to executive session. The City Council will recess its open meeting and reconvene in executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code Section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one consultation with attorney. Seek the advice of an attorney about pending or contemplating litigation or settlement offer in honor of the manner in which of duty of the attorney to the governmental bodies under the Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas, clearly conflicts with this chapter. One City Hall and two Concho Street and General Land Office, DLO Drainage Projects. We are now in executive session at seven oh six.
I'm bringing us back into session is now eight oh six. We are going to move on to a business item eleven A. The city council reconvene into regular session upon the conclusion of the executive session. The city council may take action on any item posted in the executive session as necessary. A. Consider the approval on the use of eminent domain to condemn property to with resolution twenty twenty four dash zero seven R. Over the city council of the city of Rockport, Texas. Finding and reaffirming that a public necessary exists to acquire a drainage easement and/or fee simple for municipal purposes to upgrade and install drainage facilities for the purpose of drainage collection, disposal, emptying, and such apparent facilities as may be necessary and other public uses in real property as portions or whole of tracts of land crossing Veterans Memorial Park on a portion of the waterfront east of Austin Broadway Streets in the Smith and Wood addition to the city of Rockport according to the map recorded in volume E., pages two seventy two dash two seventy three, D. Records of Aransas County, Texas, and generally described as a portion of approximately one oh two point five acre track conveyed to the Aransas County Nav Navigation District Number One by D. Dated October fifteenth nineteen thirty six and recorded in volume Q. Two, page two seventy, D. Records of Aransas County, Texas, and revised and amended August fifteenth nineteen fifty three and recorded in volume M. Three, page four ninety nine. D. Records of Aransas County, Texas, said property owned wholly or partially by Aransas County Navigation District Number One, providing and reaffirming notice of official determination to acquire real property for drainage easement and/or fee simple for municipal purposes. Providing or affirming operation for the city manager to obtain the necessary appraisal report and make the bona fide offers to adjust compensation for easement and fee simple ratifying prior documents and acts for accusation of the easement and/or fee simple ratifying prior documents and adds an acts made for acquisition of the easement and/or fee simple authorizing and reaffirming authority of legal counsel in eminent domain proceedings on behalf of the city for the accusations of the easements and/or fee simple on said tracts if negotiations are unsuccessful. Authorizing and reaffirming seeking all legal means necessary to enter upon said property for work necessary to effectuate the need or ability to seek eminent domain proceedings and studies and well, I'm sorry, incident there to authorize and reaffirming appropriation of funds from a lawful source and providing for effective date. Gosh, okay, we're going to open for discussion.
All right, uh, may I, if I may, uh, myself and Vanessa met with Chairman DiCo and Vice Chair Velasquez today to discuss this, this item. We agreed in principle to do some things and to continue negotiations, but we really feel like we're really close. Of course, they have to take some things to their board and we have to agree. Once we get everything back with our board, they asked for a postponement of thirty days. And believe what we'll do tonight is when I make a motion is to move forward with this with an effective date thirty days from now so that that kind of gets both things covered. But again, we feel pretty good about the, the work that was accomplished today in that meeting. It's the, it's the part of this we've come to an agreement on anything in a long time. So I feel really good about that. And with that said, I would like to move make a motion. I move approval of the resolution that the city of Rockport authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire property crossing Veterans Memorial Park on a portion of the waterfront east of Austin Broadway Streets in the Smith and Wood addition to the city of Rockport according to the map and record of volume E., pages two seventy two to two seventy three, D. Records of Aransas County, Texas, and generally described as a portion of the approximately one oh two point five acre track conveyed to the Aransas County Navigation District Number One by D. Dated October fifteenth nineteen thirty six and recorded in volume Q. Two, page two seventy, D. Records of Aransas County, Texas, and revised and amended on August fifteenth nineteen fifty three and recorded in the volume M. Three, page four ninety nine, D. Records of Aransas County, Texas, said property owned wholly or partially by Aransas County Navigation District Number One for necessary drainage easements and/or fee simple for the purpose of, among other municipal purposes, including but not limited to install drainage facilities including lines to facilitate drainage collection, conveyance, disposal, emptying, and up current facilities and other public uses with an effective date of May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Is there any further discussion from council?
Yes, councillor, if you could, could you just give us a little bit of what moving that effective date to May twenty eighth?
Yeah, so what that means is if the council votes to approve this resolution tonight, it, it, it will not go into effect and until May twenty eighth. And therefore, you know, your legal counsel could not move forward on condemnation until the twenty eighth. It would not be permissible until that day, until thereafter because it does, it's not effective until that day. And so the effect of that, I think, is to give the parties time to continue to paper up this negotiation, to commit it all to writing and to give both bodies the opportunity to have it reviewed by legal counsel and to thereafter vote on it because of course no contract or agreement can become effective until it's voted on by both bodies. And I understand that they have a meeting in mid-May, I forget the exact date, but somewhere in mid-May. And then that would allow you, if they, if they have approved it at their meeting in mid-May, that will allow you to then approve any agreement that comes out of that at your May twenty eighth meeting. And if by that time that has occurred, then this resolution would no longer be necessary and you would put it back on the agenda to rescind it at that time because you would not need to move forward with condemnation. If however, by the twenty eighth, um, that agreement is not finally papered and isn't ready to be approved by you, the city council, the resolution has already been passed and your legal counsel will move forward with condemnation thereafter. So that's the effect of having a future effective date in this instance.
This hopefully satisfies part of the negotiation, you know, given, given the other navigation board a little bit of time, uh, and both attorneys to review our agreements that we have coming in the future. So if we, if I was just to postpone this, I don't know that that would have worked for the, for this board. So I think this is a great way to, to get everything we need on this. And, and for the record, if, if we can move forward with this and everybody agrees to the agreement, I will put this on the, a future, uh, future agenda to pull this.
Yes, sir.
To rescind this.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, to rescind this ordinance, resolution.
So one, I want to thank you councilmen for meeting with them. I know it was pretty short notice to get folks together. I think it's important that we recognize every one of you that came here and submitted comments for us to move forward. I'm not a fan of postponement. We discussed that at length. Continuing to kick the can on this is not acceptable considering where we're at. They were given thirty days to respond to us and chose to not even so much as say, we're sorry, we haven't had a chance to get to it. It's imperative that we move forward. I'm willing to concede on the, the delay, if you will, on the effective date, but I want to make it clear that my vote tonight for this motion is to move forward with condemnation. Period. That effective date will move forward. However, as was mentioned, if they come forward and they actually produce a document that's worthy of us to reconsider, then we'll go from there. So I'm hopeful that they will actually produce a document that they've not been able to do to date. But I do appreciate their effort to meet with you councilmen and I'm looking forward to hearing back from them. But I think it's imperative that we continue to move forward as we've been asked to do so tonight.
You know, I always remain hopeful and advocate for good relations with my constituents. I remain the same for good relationships through the government entities of this area. So I do hope that we can come to an agreement, but I also will follow Danielle. It's time to move forward and advocate for the protection of people's businesses, their homes and their health. So we have to make a motion tonight, but I do hope that we can have a alternative resolution. If not, we still have this to move forward with.
You know, just when I say thank you for everyone that came out or, you know, written their, their comments, it makes a big difference when you all come together and have your voices heard and helps us understand where the importance is and what we have to do to make sure that everyone is, you know, we're living up to what we're supposed to do as a council here. I agree, we do need to move forward and this is why we're approving to move forward. But with that effective date, we're putting a clock on them to finally be held accountable. And if they want to work with us, then great, we're excited, we're ready for it. But if not, we're ready to, you know, not have to keep coming back here and going in front of you guys and moving forward to make things happen. So this is where we're at tonight. So now that we have a motion and a second, I'm going to take a roll call. So we have Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four, aye, motion passes.
We are now going to move in, back into our consent agenda. The following items may be acted upon in a single motion. No separate discussion or action on any of these items will be held unless pulled at the request of a member of the city council. Would any of the council like to pull any of the consent items?
No, ma'am.
I would like to take a motion, which one?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
A second?
A second.
Okay, Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four, aye. Regular agenda number six, we're going to do ordinances, resolution, and public hearings. Consider the approval on a second and final reading of ordinance nineteen thirty two of the city of Rockport, Texas, amending ordinance number nineteen twenty nine, which amended the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget beginning October first, twenty twenty three, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty four, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for publication, providing for effective date. Mrs. Robby?
Yes, no, no, no change.
No change? Okay, I would like to.
I move to approve item six A as presented.
Second?
Second.
Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four, aye, motion passes. We have agenda seven, and this is going to be other, we have seven A. Consider the approval of awarding a contract to E. D. R. Architects for interior design and engineering improvements to the Gagon Fire Station. Michael?
Thank you all. As you know, the, the Gagon Fire Station was remediated with a mold issue over the last few months. And we've been working with the mold remediation company for the last few months trying to figure out a way to rebuild the interior of the fire station. And the, the mold remediation company brought to us a local builder that was trying to use just a, a, a computer program to draw up an interior floor plan for the fire station and it, it just wasn't working. So we went to our engineering. engineering firm, the city's contracted engineering firm, and they put us together with E D R Architects, and we received a proposal from them to take on the responsibility to to design the interior rebuild of the fire station. And again, this will all be submitted to the insurance and everything else. But we have a contract for forty-five thousand dollars that includes the architectural design and the mechanical and engineering necessary to rebuild the interior of the Gagon Fire Station, and we're asking for approval to move forward with the architectural firm.
Any questions from council?
I move to approve item seven A as presented.
A second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
I just I know we've got some guests here from the fire department.
Yes.
You give me a thumbs up, are you guys good with the plan? Come on, there you go, all four, okay, all four. I'm good.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. So Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four, aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Agenda B. Consider the approval of street closure request from Augie Garcia, S R Boyle House for May fourth, twenty twenty-four, from six P M to ten P M for Saint Mary Street from Austin Street and eastward, about hundred feet toward Magnolia. Shelley?
So we received a request from Mr. Garcia, who's supposed to be here tonight. He's not. He's with the S R Boyle House, and he's requesting a street closure, a temporary street closure from six to ten P M. He, in your packet, includes the formal request and the map. And he said the other items do not pertain to him, since there's not going to really be an additional trash, and there will not be alcohol served at the outside the event.
We we requested from in the last meeting, our our last council meeting, signatures from from neighboring businesses. Was that required of this one?
I did send him that request and did not receive the information, but he said he would be here. He did note that he contacted the person on the one side of him.
Not interrupt.
No, please.
I know that they had a recent merchant meeting, and it did seem like it was pretty well approved by those surrounding. However, we're trying to really standardize these event requests. We have requested in the past two requests that we've received, one of those affected business either support for against letters of the businesses around that area in which he seeks to reserve. So I think that it was something that you had requested of him, and he did not provide to you, correct?
Correct.
I've got a whole list of things that you additionally write. Shelley let me know that he needs to be here. I don't know if that's a sign of not needing it anymore.
Go ahead, if you're concerned.
Well, you know, the the responses to the questions I don't know are appropriate either. You know, advising that there's no alcoholic beverages to be sold outside. So I'm assuming people can still go into his bar, get a drink, and go stand outside. So it's still there's no way he's throwing a party in the street and not having alcohol.
Right.
So he doesn't necessarily maybe meet the T A B C guidelines that are required, but to just say it's it's a nothing, it it's just like a normal Saturday is not not true. We don't anticipate any more trash. How can you have an outdoor party and not have trash? There's just, maybe there's parties that I've never been privileged to that don't have trash. To say you don't need a traffic plan, you're literally putting citizens in the middle of a street with a movable barrier and not making accommodation for the fact that that's a, we don't put people in chairs in the middle of the street. He's not here, he's not here to defend himself, we don't have the signatures. I'm really not trying to pick on Augie, we're kind of getting to that point, but I don't feel like he's made any effort to try to come and meet us and and do this the way that we've asked. So questions that my question, is it open to the general public? Can anybody participate?
From what I understand, this is their fourth anniversary, so I I would say yes. It's an employee appreciation, or it was like a right.
But it also, it says here that it's just customer appreciation celebration. We do not, we anticipate about a hundred guests. That's a four-year anniversary customer appreciation celebration. So it sounds to me like they're extending their service space into the street and adding on an area for music. It specifies there will be no alcoholic beverages sold outside of S R Boyle House, but if he's extending his event space into the street, you can sell, he's just not specifying it will be sold outside, that doesn't mean he can carry it outside, so I see the concern there. I think we need more information.
I don't I don't think the street can be okay with that. No way. Traffic plan or protection.
Well, if there's alcohol involved, you'd have something, something there. And and I agree. It's likely there will be alcohol involved, even though he's not going to sell it outside.
Correct. In the last two, I think, of these that we considered, for me, if it's public space, they're not paying for the public space. If the profit is solely off that organization, I have a general problem with it. And so this appears to be a private party on a public space and didn't answer all the questions. So, I mean, pure word, ma'am, I'm going to I'm going to pull the I support you, but I just don't.
It sounds like we all have a lot of questions, concerns that he is not here to answer. I'm huge advocate for promoting all events downtown with the right information in front of me. So I just, I mean, I can only do so much with what's provided to me.
I know in the future, we're working on an application where several departments will have to sign off, and they'll have to provide several different types of documents. And they'll also have to submit it about sixty to thirty days in advance, so that we make sure everything is there.
The ordinance that come with that, I don't think is just on my inbox. I just, I have to kind of, again, we
pushing to everyone to be the same, that's my my problem. I sup- I support Augie, I really don't want to turn it down, but if we're requiring this out of other businesses, we have to, across the board, it's just not fair to pick and choose winners and losers. And and I would like to see a little bit more of an effort if you're trying to ask for a street closer to get your information to us in a timely manner, and also come to the meeting so we can ask those questions. So that's kind of where my thought is on that.
Maybe I would feel different if it was somebody new that's never done this before, has never tried it before, and is like, I'm begging forgiveness for ignorance, right? This is not what we're dealing with here.
Hearing, I I agree. We're asking the same thing out of, from trying to get to the same thing out of everyone, and and we just don't have the information here. With that, that being said, I'll make a motion to deny seven B as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four, aye. Motion has been denied. All right. We are moving on to C. Consider the approval of engagement agreement with Pete Andrew Hall for professional services related to the twenty twenty-three audit. That is you, Robbie?
This is circling back around on the ninth, council approved the firm CPA firm Pete Andrew Hall to do the twenty twenty-three audit engagement. After that, then we negotiated a fee of forty-one thousand five hundred to do that engagement. It's a, that's a very good fee. And so we're asking council to please approve that and get the engagement, engagement letter signed and get that twenty twenty-three audit going.
Council, any questions? Any questions, council?
Make a motion to approve item seven C as presented.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four, aye. Motion passes. D. Consider the approval of heritage district certificate of appropriateness application submitted for seven twenty-two navigation circle to rebuild aquarium at Rockport Harbor that was destroyed by Hurricane Harvey. This is you, Carrie.
So this application comes before you with a partnership between Aransas County Navigation and Aransas County. And they're obviously rebuilding the aquarium that was destroyed by Hurricane Harvey. The application's coming before you because they're asking for a variance of section seven point three point four, which is the use of the building materials. Now, this is in the Harbor Destination District, and it doesn't really follow all the same rules as downtown and stuff, but it is it is subject to some of them, and this is one of them. The building is all metal, and it's it's supposed to be twenty-five percent metal sheathing. But it is it is a good building. The way they're going to paint it and and decorate it, it's going to be very attractive. So staff is recommending approval. Now, we do have Ms. El Morales, who is the project manager for Aransas County on this project here, to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, council?
I I think the 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 architectural renderings, I think, are going to be the way it looks.
Yes.
I think it's going to be obviously a lot better than the concrete slab that they're now, but I think it's going to be a a great addition down down at the harbor.
It's very attractive.
So this probably dumb question, and I'm sure the answer is money, but it, you know, knowing that there was this restriction in there, I mean, even though there's, everything doesn't look the same like it's supposed to, trying to get there, right? So every new build should follow into new codes and new standards. They're moving forward, knowing that it violates the standards that the community has put in place. So why?
That's an ill question.
It probably has zeros, I'm assuming there's zeros involved, so. And I say that saying it looks beautiful and I'm excited, but.
Hi, I am El Morales of Aransas County, and yes, it does have to come down to the dollar figures. And we are replacing a metal building that was buried for, and that's what the insurance and the whole plan was to replace it with a metal building. So we did add the decking on the side and the board, the aquarium board is planning on doing a mural on the side that was going to be facing the parking lot to kind of break up that whole metal. And with the striping, I think it does look more attractive. We are trying to do the striping so that it works with the Aquarium Education Center well. And it is the dollar amount, and we still don't know until we go out for bid, we don't know how much the building will actually cost.
I don't even get started on the crab, you know, which crab we're going to use, so.
Definitely looks like a blue crab.
Just don't want to, I don't want to say anything about the crab.
Yeah, and that was just my quick little putting the mural on the side, and you know, that was the discussion, is it going to be a crab, is it going to be the eel, mori? Mori, marley, marley. Marley, the eel, what is it going to be on the side of the building? So I just threw the crab on there. I don't know what the board will come up with, that's not my my place.
We knew that would come up.
Yeah.
Well, and and Carrie, I know that, I mean, this item is very specific to the application of appropriateness. One of the issues that come up before was about whether or not it met other codes. I assume
Yes.
that still goes through all the normal process for the city.
Yes, ma'am. Are you talking about the structure itself and all the?
There was discussion about restrooms, possibly ADA, there's some other things.
They've added restrooms, and it is, it will be compliant.
Yes, it does have two restrooms that have been added to the interior of it, and it does have the two restrooms that are in the Aquarium Education Center. But we did feel like we needed to add those restrooms inside this building, and it is ADA.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Yes.
You're wrong with the crab. We're not, this is not going to be the other code.
No, no.
If there's any other questions, I'd like to.
Hearing all, I move to approve item seventy as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
Right, Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four, aye. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. E. Presentation of the monthly urban engineering update. Mike?
In discussions with the the city manager and everything, she asked me to have our contract engineers come in once a month and just give an update on some of our projects and such. So this will be our first presentation, and we have Mr. Anthony Allen from Urban Engineering that will talk about our projects.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Hi, Mayor Pro Tim, council members, my name's Anthony Allen. I'm a project manager with Urban Engineering, and I'm kind of moving into being the liaison for Urban Engineering in the city of Rockport. I've been working with Vanessa and city staff on these projects and getting more familiar. I'll just start going through these projects and kind of where we're at and what we're doing. The G L O Community Development Block Grant, various city drainage improvements, it's four small projects or four projects throughout the city. South Anne and East Hackberry storm sewer improvements are installed. Contractors currently adjusting manhole rings, preparing for paving, after which contractor is moving to Market at Church. Market at Church is another project. Majority of the storm sewer improvements are installed, with the exception of the street crossing at Market and Austin, the downfall, and the paving. Sabanol, Anne, Orleans, Laurel, and Magnolia, the majority of the infrastructure is installed. The proposed costs for the joint repairs or latent defects on all storm sewer installed by previous contractor are being reviewed by the bonding company. So and Trailer and Tulley, the improvements have not yet started, contractors moving to forward, that's later in the schedule. FEMA Enterprise and Maple Drainage Improvements, project plans are completed and have been submitted to FEMA for review. Last week, received an update from T D M, who stated the project plans are being reviewed by FEMA right now. We've are, I'm actively trying to get a response on when FEMA will provide a response on that. Like dealing with FEMA, we don't get answers back very fast, but we are actively asking for those updates every week. Texas Department of Agriculture Community Development Block Grant. Oh, sorry, that's a just, that's a Texas Department of Agriculture funded, I think it's a shared cost, a cost share project for the reconstruction of Klugee and Holly Road. Urban Engineering will be providing the grant works, providing grant works a contract for engineering services this week. The FEMA-funded hazard mitigation generator replacement, there were three applications in for six generators. We did start getting comments back for two of those applications in March and have responded to two R F Is pertaining to four of those generators. So that's a good thing, we're getting R F Is, we're getting questions, that is moving forward in the FEMA process. A quick approval would be better, but the fact that we're getting R F Is 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 good news. G L O Community Development Block Grant, Aransas County Basin Thirty-nine Drainage Improvements. We're currently waiting on the G L O contract amendment to accept Basin Thirty-nine, so they're working on Amendment Number Five, which doesn't have anything to do with Basin Thirty-nine right now. As soon as that gets approved, they are going to submit the Amendment Six, which the county will get the Basin Thirty-nine approved and extend the timeline to get that project completed. The wastewater treatment plant repairs. So contractor has demoed the existing grit removal equipment and grit removal at the grit removal unit. Some components of the new grit removal equipment were picked up last week and sent back for regalvanizing due to rust. Replace, they replaced the east clarifier support bearing and is ready to put back into service. Urban Engineering has received thirty submittals, and we're working through those submittals, getting those approved and get back to the contractor. Contractor has rough-stake corners of the new structures. The Gagon Lift Station, new twelve-inch force main, contractor has finished the new pipe installation, and a punchless walkthrough was performed on April seventeenth with the contractor, utility staff, and urban engineering. Only minor items listed for completion, like adjusting a valve box and providing a valve operating and maintenance manual. So that's all I have. Any any questions?
Questions?
Well, thank you guys very much. If y'all ever have any questions on our engineering projects, please let me know, Vanessa know, and we'll get you guys answers ASAP. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, I just, one, thank you, this is, this is good, it's a good progress. You know, it would be nice, maybe in the future, if we have something in our packet, now that we know we're going to be on the cycle, get something in our packet so. now that we know we're going to be on this cycle, get something in our packet so we can think through it. That's a lot of words and it's late, right?
Sure.
My mind's kind of blown on that, but, um.
We, yeah, I'd be.
It says we get better, you know, it can't be always perfect, but, you know, and clarifying the work that Urban's doing versus some of the other, you know, folks, but.
Sure, I would, I would love.
It's a step in the right direction.
I'd love to put together a, just a, a summary for you guys to review before I get up here, that'd be great.
Yeah, that would be, thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eight, uh, city managers' update.
Got nothing.
Okay. She took it back.
We have our first budget meeting on Thursday. There's not going to be a lot of interactive, well, there's not going to be a lot for you to act on. I just like, it's mostly a, a dump of information, so we've got several entities coming to, uh, talk to you about their needs, what they're providing, and some things like that. I'm going to have staff today and prioritize our asks. So, um, Robbie, will you give me some, some solid numbers and things that the staff is looking to accomplish this year? But Thursday is mostly going to be the information drop for you guys. I'll finish lunch, get stale.
With a stale sandwich?
Is it a sandwich?
She said a stale sandwich. You know what it is.
What would you rather have?
Something more. You have.
I'm good, please.
And helping, like me.
Literally throwing butter for not a sandwich. You're just going to like thirty people there, you get a sandwich. Is there something a little less large?
Can I leave that vegetable on it?
Personally, cook yourself one. No, no question.
I'm going to bring you a head of lettuce.
You might get mail, what the heck, guys, come on.
Request denied, sorry.
Oh, and we will have chief interviews on the thirtieth, so.
Do we get more mail then?
Nope, you definitely get a sandwich that day. So we'll start at nine in the morning. You'll start an exec- an open session, you'll recess to executive session. And then there will be three stations that the three finalists move through, and, uh, you'll have forty-five minutes with each contestant.
Is the, uh.
Speed dating.
Is the, the roundtable, is, is it still going to be kind of the same? Same way you proposed, uh, I guess, last meeting?
Yep, we'll have, anybody that comes to the public meetings will get forty-five minutes. The department heads and a couple other select people will get forty-five minutes, and council will have forty-five minutes.
With each, each of the candidate, each of the three or five?
Well, hopefully on the twenty-ninth, it will be narrowed down to two or three.
Okay.
So if there's an extra, then there's just an extra hard decision to make.
And the, the twenty-ninth will be, uh, that'll be on staff?
The twenty-ninth is on our consulting firm. They will bring all, they're bringing about ten candidates down. Seven? Six, seven. Okay, somewhere around there. They're going to bring, and they're going to do their interviews here and, um, then give us the top two or three.
The consulting firm's going to narrow it down from that to, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions of need?
I've got nothing.
You've already made your wants known. Can we get that in a PowerPoint?
Okay.
PowerPoint.
Since no one else has questions, we're going to move on to agenda item number nine, city council report. Ward one.
Not much on my side to report. I'm going to rest for budget season.
Feel the same, I just, you know, I, the aquarium folks already left, but I am super excited about that. I think I've been to the other aquarium a gazillion times. I mean, it's just anytime we go to the harbor, that's where my kids want to go. We just zip through the aquarium for many, many years, so that's exciting. I appreciate all the citizens' participation today. It's, it's, it feels good to have them active and, and it's for a good reason, but other than that, I yield my.
Ward three.
Just want to reiterate that we're very successful, well, a promising meeting today with, with members of Nav District and, and the city. And I truly value to everybody that came here and spoke today. We don't get, we don't get that very often, and it was, it was, uh, very powerful to hear, um, everybody's concerns. So, um, I'm just thankful everyone was here to, to do that, and that's all.
Okay, of course, yes, thank you. Uh, I only have one thing that I can report on. I attended the, uh, Chamber of Commerce Governmental Affairs Meeting. Actually went, didn't say anything. And we had, uh, we had went for, Tex dot was, uh, representative from Tex dot was there to speak, and we had a conversation about, um, our concerns with our growing population and some spots around town that, um, have hold concerns to us, and they just need to make sure that they're aware of them and we're in contact to make sure that when they're approving their things and bringing it to us, that they keep those things in mind, and it was a, it was a good conversation. And I think that's all.
Mayor Protim, I have one, one more comment I want to make.
I'd like to thank Jean, who is retiring, uh, Friday, is that correct? What, what's your last date?
What?
Oh, you didn't send her the email?
I have not.
I hear you're having a sandwich.
And that you're, uh, retiring, so.
Yeah, I'll get you some.
There might be lettuce on those, though.
Well, thank you for your time, sir.
Yes, thank you, yes. And with that, I'll take that.
A bunch of adjournments.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned at eight forty-six.